Team 2020, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. So if you'd please follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next on our agenda is roll call. Joe, do you want to do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Councilmember Thede?
Did he perhaps log in under the wrong Zoom?
Yeah, I guess I didn't. I don't see him on here.
Maybe he's practicing his Christmas reading.
Councilmember Olson?
I'm here.
Just, just before Joe, before you go any further, Dave did send me a note says, I'm looking for the Zoom link. He can't find it. You wanted somebody want to try to send it, resend it to him?
Mayor, we are resending it to him right now.
Okay, sounds good. So Joe, what we'll do is if you just want to finish the roll and then once Councilmember Thede joins us, we'll, we'll add him to the, to the roll call.
Sounds good. We should be good now.
Okay. Well, he didn't call me, but I am here.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Bailey.
There you go, Joe. All right. Before we moved open forum, what I did want to do is just wanted to read a statement that we do now during these times of Zoom calls. We are providing for public input via Zoom. Please visit our website at cottagegrovemn.gov and click on the public meetings, quick links box, and then click on the December 16th, 2020 meeting. You'll find a variety of options if you would like to speak during the open forum or on any part of the regular agenda items. We want to be transparent, accessible and inclusive, and we hope these measures will accommodate everyone who wishes to participate in our open and public meetings. So again, we are at that point and I'm going to just double check. All right. So we're now at that number four, which is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that would like to speak on open forum is welcome to do so at this time. Other than our panelists, I do see one person out there as an attendee. So I'll go ahead and open the open forum portion and see if there's anybody that would like to speak on open forum this evening. Anybody at all? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the open forum portion of our meeting and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry, roll call. All right, Joe, roll call.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede? Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. All right, motion carries. So I'm just watching to see if I can see Dave, Councilmember Thede to get in. I have not seen him in yet. Next on our agenda is presentations and we do have one this evening and this is kind of, this is fun because this is our yearly opportunity in December that council member and vice president of the EDA, Dennis, is going to walk us through some of our accomplishments from the 2020 period. So Councilmember Dennis, I'll let you take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Bailey, and I appreciate the rest of the council for the time and allowing me to do this. This is the sixth year that I've had an opportunity to present what I call the year in review. And really what this is all about is an opportunity for us to highlight and recognize some of the great accomplishments that we've made together as a team over the course of the year. And when I talk about team, I'm talking about everybody in the community. I'm talking about the folks who live here, who cast a vote in their trust to put us into positions of leadership. The council itself, the folks who work on our staff team, and it's important to note everybody on the team that works here to make a difference. And so this is a chance to bring forward and share some of those great details with the city. And, you know, there's never been, in my opinion, a greater need to have some good news than this particular year. So this one has a little bit more value to me personally. So as we kind of look at how I've got this set up, what I generally do is I reach out to our staff by departments and I have them give me some, some of the accomplishments and what I get is the unenviable job of having to go through and, and bring that down to a short list because there's so many good things that happen. And so I just want to say ahead of time that I'm hoping that I selected the very best of the accomplishments that we had this year. And so as we look at some of these slides that are put together, they change every single year. And what you'll notice is there is different pictures that represent some of the unique facets or, or great achievements that we've made over the course of the year's time. So as you look at that, keep that in the back of the mind. And with this, I've got our communications manager, Mr. Scott Soroka assisting. So Scott, we will go ahead and move to the next slide. And what I like to do is provide just a little bit of background for the community to know and understand how our city is structured. And in essence, we have six individual departments. The first one we'll start out with is our administration, which also includes communications and economic development. We have a finance department, community development, parks and recreation, public safety, and last but not least is public works. Next, please. So we'll begin with administration. And over the course of the year, our team assisted us as a city council with over 38 individual council meetings that covered over 450 agenda items. Now, these are the things that we do, kind of the nuts and bolts pieces that help us to enact and, and move the people's business forward. So they're very important in terms of how we do the job and how we take care of our community. Additionally, our city clerk's office managed a timely and accurate election for over 23,000 registered voters here in our city. Our communications group launched a new website and orchestrated almost 600 social media posts to over 31,000 followers. They also kept Cottage Grove informed with newsletters, videos and more so that we keep the community in the know. Also in administration, we'll talk a little bit about some of our community and economic development. We, for the first time in over 20 years, were able to accomplish the groundbreaking on a four-story, 120-unit apartment complex, which is going to be called Grove 80. And this is really important for us because one of the things that we seek to do is provide full spectrum housing for the community. So that people can come here and find whatever type of homes they're looking for and in essence, live a lifetime and not have to leave. So this is a great leap forward for us and we're hoping that we get more because one of the studies that went along with this process indicated that we have more need for additional housing types. We also supported both through the council and the EDA in establishing a small business assistance program, which was integral in helping 19 different companies that were affected by the COVID-19 emergency shutdown. And we got some really great feedback on behalf of some of those companies. The money came from the EDA trust fund, which is not taxpayer derived and was used as grant money to help keep those businesses open and to bridge them to the point that we are now. Additionally, our staff provided substantial work in the structuring and creation of a brand new convention and visitors bureau, which is being set up to promote Cottage Grove, to bring opportunity and people here to our community. So when we do finally get to the other side of COVID, we're going to have a, a fantastic business program here in town. And that money comes from our lodging facilities through use of a user fee that they collect and then pass on to our economic development group, and then we use that money to promote. Next slide, please. Finance department. We had four key accomplishments this year. First was producing a balanced budget. And one of the very nice things about the budget that we had is that most of the residents, in fact, about 83% of all of our residential property owners did not feel the impact of increased property taxes from the city portion of their taxes. And that's one thing to always keep in mind because there is a multitude of entities that do take tax money. But the city only has a certain portion of that and we do our very best here to control that for you. Additionally, we received and allocated $2.8 million in federal CARES Act funds, which were used to help us to provide everything from personal protective equipment to COVID testing and a bunch of other details that allowed us as a community to get through this as, as well as possible during the time. Additionally, we maintained our AA+ bond rating and received the Government Finance Officers Association reporting award for the 30th consecutive year in a row. So that represents excellence in terms of how we run the financial end of our business. We go through an auditing process and we meet all the criteria so that we've got full and complete transparency for the people to know that we handled the money properly. And last but not least, our info technology group produced a hyper-converged data center refresh. We also added a phone system upgrade and a large laptop acquisition, which helped us to facilitate staff working from home. These opportunities helped us to have continuity of our operations during the time of COVID. And we're integral to making sure that we didn't have any breaks in the action for being able to provide service for our community. Next slide, please. All right, community development. We are a growing city and we continued with a very high level of service and exponential growth despite pandemic market conditions. Now, year to date, we have, as of this moment, a new record for housing permits, which is 377. Additionally, we were very busy in the area of inspections. We did over 16,481 individual inspections of work being done, generating $146.6 million in permit valuation. We also processed 56 planning cases, including eight residential final plots totaling 314 new residential lots and 153 townhome units. Additionally, we, we earned after, after a long time and a lot of work, we earned the formal approval of the Met Council of our 2040 comprehensive plan, which in essence defines how we grow as a community. Not only within, but also how we interact and match up with other communities to ensure that smart, smart growth is happening for the area. And last but not least, we drastically improved the permitting process that we have through a software program called EnterGov, which includes more efficient online permitting for residents, developers and staff. Next slide, please. Parks and recreation. We reinvested and/or expanded systems and features for seven existing city parks, including one new location to be called Strawberry Fields. We developed COVID-19 preparedness plans to safely reopen the ice arena and golf course once the shutdown restrictions were lifted. This allowed us to recover more than 90% of ICE rental sales through existing relationships and expanded our customer base at the Rynox Golf Course, where in 2020, we recorded a historic number of rounds played at over 40,000. We also used park facilities to engage residents in healthy outdoor activity during the pandemic, including things like paddle share, where we had over 800 kayak rentals, and enacted something called Park and Play Leap Day. We also coordinated 1,000 volunteer hours to various services like Adopt a Trail, Adopt a Drain, Friends of the Mississippi, the Wake Dog Park, the Cottage Grove Athletic Association and more. Next, please. Public safety. First, we'll talk about our police department. We responded to over 29,000 service calls here to date, including one very important call down on the bottom left, which a couple of our officers were instrumental in saving some ducklings that ended up down a drain. We also, our investigations division referred 499 cases to county for prosecution. We secured 651,000 in reimbursement funds through state aid, school resource officers, traffic enforcement grants and more. We also took advantage of new and emerging technologies, including body worn cameras, less lethal munitions, drones and new squad car cameras. And this is all done to better serve our community and do it in a way that's respectful and professional. And lastly, we enhanced training for employees through, for both their wellness and training through the use of our hero center, which involved some hearing, EKG and lead testing protocols as well. So our police team was very busy over the course of the year. Next, please. Next, we'll talk about our fire service. Internally, we promoted three firefighters to fire captain leadership positions. And those three gentlemen will do a fantastic job as leaders for us here in the years to come. We also secured more life-saving equipment to improve response capabilities. One of these was to take possession of the 105-foot aerial ladder truck in July. And folks, this is really important because we now have the capacity to keep our promises to make a difference in a time of need. We can reach every single structure we now have, whether it be residential, commercial or industrial, to get people out of a structure in a time of need and make that difference. And one of the really cool things we have on this fire truck is a infrared heat-seeking camera option that allows us to look for hot spots or to capture images. If, let's say there was a, an automobile crash in an area that somebody went down a hill, we could do a heat signature fine for the body or the person and make that difference in a timely fashion. So I believe we are one of the first to have that type of camera on a fire truck apparatus. We're very, very proud of that. We also upgraded emergency lights on all of our different vehicles. And last but not least, exponentially increased our inspections, including life safety inspections and nearly 350 fire and building inspections to keep our community safe. Next, please. EMS and management. We obtained a Minnesota Department of Health for COVID response and provided more than 3,000 tests for the general public in November. We led the city's external and internal efforts in response to COVID-19 through our incident management team and virtual emergency operations center. We increased efficiencies and cost savings through a care metric-based quality assurance program, including supply chain management systems and developed an EMS equipment replacement schedule. And finally, we partnered with Homeland Security and Emergency Management and FEMA to deal with spring flooding issues, which we had to deal with in the early part of the year. Next, please. Public works. So we have a couple of different divisions within that we'll talk a little bit about that includes utilities, streets and fleet and facilities. So from public works in general, we constructed a new interim water treatment plant in the intermediate pressure zone. We initialized an ion exchange pilot project for the removal of PFAS from our well three treatment plant. Our street teams installed over 3,500 tons of asphalt and completed over 350 work orders citywide. We also added a 13th plow route to increase efficiencies for snow removal and clearing that enhances driver safety. Our forestry division handled 431 work orders managing our urban forest. We also implemented Pub Works software to organize building maintenance and track staff workload again to create additional efficiencies. And lastly, we hired an administration technician to oversee approximately 1,100 vehicle and equipment service requests that are performed annually to take care of our entire fleet of vehicles. Next, please. In the engineering section for public works, we, our team led our city through one of the busiest construction seasons ever. We administered public and private street and utility construction totaling approximately $38.4 million. We connected 160 homes to the city's waterworks through the three-year consent order. We also completed reconstruction of two heavily trafficked sections on Adia Street and West Point Douglas Road, which really helped to smooth those areas out. And finally, provided diligent management, analysis and direction for guiding the city's approach to achieving high-quality and safe drinking water for our sustainable future. Next. So at this point, this concludes the presentation and one of the things that I would like to do is take a moment to say thank you because it's really important, folks. In any circumstance, we are only as well-served as those who support us. And so at this point, I would like to recognize some of our administrative leaders and their commitment to working with our council to run a great business for the community. Up first is our city administrator, Jennifer Levitt. Next is public safety director, Pete Kerner. We have finance director, Robin Rowland. Public works director and city engineer, Ryan Burfind. Community development director, Ben Boyk. Economic development director, Christine Costello. And last but not least is Parks and Recreation Director, Zach Doctor. So I would like to thank all of you for your dedication and accomplishments. Additionally, I'd like to recognize every single member of our team, regardless of the department or the job that you perform. Everybody on this staff is integral and extremely important to our team. And everybody is committed to giving our community the very best in terms of service, quality and return. So with that said, Mayor Bailey, I would like to turn this over to you for some comments that you would like to say on behalf of our staff.
Fantastic. Well, and thank you, Councilmember Dennis, for, and working with staff and Scott Soroka, who's been manning the, at a remote location, obviously, the slide presentation. You know, it's, it's, it's been a crazy year, as we all know, dealing with COVID and that, but behind the scenes, there's been a lot of really neat things happening within our community and, and frankly, whether it's, you know, having record-breaking, as, as Councilmember Dennis mentioned, record-breaking housing developments and things going on within the city, road projects, additional construction and such, and, and planning for a possible referendum on a community center next year. The fact remains, it all boils down to people and it boils down to the staff and the, the, all the workers within the city of Cottage Grove. And frankly, our citizens that entrust in us as council members and, and mayor, as well as our staff to do the right thing and, and manage the city in an exemplary fashion. So, you know, for me personally, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff, everybody out there, the citizens of Cottage Grove for sharing your thoughts and, and concerns sometimes, which, you know, we need to hear when those happen so that we can, we can fix it. Because if there is one thing I just want to say on my final point, then I'll open up for any council comments, is that it, one of the neat things that I've seen is no matter how small the issue is, like you saw a picture of those police officers getting ducks out of a drain. We do work to help on even the littlest of things for our community. So that is something that is somewhat unique, to be frank with you. So that is something that is somewhat unique, to be frank with you, within our community, that our staff goes to a, a higher level of, of customer service than most cities do. So we have something to be proud of with regards to that, and I want to make sure the staff knows it doesn't go unnoticed. Any council comments at this point? Yeah, Councilmember Mills.
I just want to also just echo what was said, and thank you, Councilmember Dennis, for putting it together. And thank you to all the staff and for all the hard work you've done this year. So thank you so much.
Fantastic. Any other comments? Alrighty, and I, I do want, there, there he is. I was gonna say, I was just literally gonna say, I want the record to show that Councilmember Thede has joined the meeting and is officially here.
So I didn't get a chance to say my ho, ho, ho here. I'm sorry, I, I, I ended up finding those other emails in my spam for some reason.
Oh.
But, so, so I'm late, but I'd like to just reach out and, and thank everybody in, in a year that was extremely trying, where we, we, there's a lot of things that we didn't know that we had to learn really fast. And I think our team did a fantastic job at doing that. So kudos to all you and hopefully, twenty twenty-one will, will be a better year.
Thank you. Perfect. All right, anybody else? All right. So with that, I guess we'll, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is Consent Calendar. Council, is there any items that you would like to pull on consent for discussion? And unfortunately, Councilmember Olson, I can't see you on my screen here, so if you do have something, you might have to speak up.
I do not, but I will move consent.
Well, actually, I do have one item. I was just gonna pull this for comment. So, and I'm gonna pull Item L for comment, but if there's nobody else, I just, the only thing I wanted to share. Item L for the public is a newspaper of official publication. And for the, the general public, and I know council knows this, the, the recommendation at the moment is to designate, we're required by law, I guess I should say that, to designate a, a newspaper with certain publication and certain legal information. And so we are currently designating the St. Paul Pioneer Press as the City of Cottage Grove's new paper, newspaper for official publications for twenty twenty-one. However, just so I can put it out there, there is a new newspaper that has recently come to town in Cottage Grove called the Cottage Grove Journal. And our staff is working with them to make sure that they get the right information that we need along with circulation and such, so that, once they achieve that target, there may be an opportunity for us after the first of the year, at some point, to redesignate a, a local newspaper. So I just wanted to mention that to the public, but also mention it to the rest of the council. That is something that staff is, is looking into so that we can work with this new group that's putting in a, in a local paper here in Cottage Grove. Now with that, unless there's any other comments, Councilmember Olson, you want to make your motion?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I will move the Consent Calendar.
Alright, so we have a motion of for consent by Councilmember Olson. Do I have seconds?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, Joe, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. So if anybody was on the, in the, the separate room that I see for the attendees, if you happen to be here for anything on consent, all of those items have been approved. Moving on to number eight is approved disbursements. A is pay the bills. I'll need a motion.
Move to pay the bills.
Alright, I'll take Councilmember Mills as the first, and I think Councilmember Dennis as the second.
Second.
There we go, okay. Any other comments? Joe, we'll do roll again.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Alright, moving on, on number nine is public hearings are on this evening. Ten is bid awards are on this evening. Eleven is regular agenda. There are two, are, are two items on our regular agenda this evening, which is number eleven. The first one is A, which is Commissions and Committee Appointments. This is where I, as the mayor, do designate different council members or myself in some cases to the various commissions, and you can see them up on the screen right now. I did make many changes from the previous year, partly because a lot of our, some of our commissions or committees have not met or have met very limitedly, which is also why, just for the general public, that we are extending the opportunity for our different committee members and commission members to stay on longer in their respective roles if they'd like to. So these were all, these were sent out to the council, and so I guess I'm looking for councils, if you have any questions or move to approve.
I just have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
It says Arts Commission. It's now been changed to Arts Committee. I think maybe that should stand in the record and have that just changed.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for that. We can add that as an amendment on there.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Alright, so we have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Alright, any other discussion? We got that one change in there for staff, so we can get that tweaked. Joe, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one point that I'd like to mention. I've greatly, greatly appreciated being involved with the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Group. And I know that with Councilmember Olson, they'll be in very good hands here as he goes through his council liaison in the coming year. And I just wanted to share that it looks like I might be actually joining that board.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're creating an advisor position, so I'll be sure to let you guys know when that happens. There's a little process we have to go through. But I just wanted to mention what a, what a fine outstanding group that is and the, the difference that they make on behalf of our community. And so I've appreciated very much being part of that.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for sharing that info. Alright, Joe, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Thank you, everybody. B is the twenty twenty-one City Council, City Council Calendar Schedule. And I'm not, oh, there it is. I was gonna say it was gonna pop up there. And as typical, due to the Fourth of July holiday, just to put it out there, we, of course, always meet on the first and third Wednesdays of the month at seven o'clock. We did cancel, like we normally do, that meeting that is typically right around the Fourth of July. We do schedule some specific budget workshops on July fourteenth to twenty-eighth this coming year at six o'clock. And then just for all, the council's aware of this, but we do have a scheduled strategic planning workshop set up now for January ninth from eight AM to four PM. And at this moment, obviously, that would be a possible Zoom situation. But we are still gonna go forward with the strategic planning workshop. So unless there's any issues or concerns by council, I'll look for a motion to approve the calendar for twenty twenty-one.
Move the calendar.
Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Joe, please roll.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Alright, thank you, everybody. Alright, now we're moving to council comments requests, and I will start out with Councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a safe and absolutely wonderful holiday season. I know it will be a different, a different type of year for, for most, but I do wish you all the best. And please, if you do need help or assistance, reach out to those organizations that can help. If you're not sure, reach out to one of us, and we can help you get connected. And if you do have the means to donate, please donate to Friends in Need Food Shelf or to Stone Soup or even the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. They all support our local residents and help in those situations. So you can help maybe bring a smile to someone else's face by making a donation. So that's all I have for tonight, but please, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you are celebrating this year. May it be a wonderful time of the year.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Councilmember Mills, you did a great job of articulating that. I, I don't know I can add much more except maybe to use the word ditto, and I know that's the same as next to Mayor Bailey's house, where he's got all of his lights on. And the next-door neighbor says ditto to what he does, which is incredible. But again, just, you know, this has been a difficult year in many ways. At the last council meeting, I talked about finding silver linings in the clouds, which I think is a very important thing for all of us to do. It really makes a difference and helps, helps us to, to build momentum and, and move forward in a very positive way. And so just as, you know, we, we like to start the year on a positive note. This is our last meeting of the year. I like to end the year on a positive note, too. And I want to talk about a fellow who is a personal friend of mine named Tom Bailey, not related to the mayor or Bailey's Nursery. And he's just a fantastic individual who cares very much for our community. And Tom came to me recently with the request of saying, you know, how can I make a difference for my city and how can I give something back? And so what he did was to, to, to reach into his checkbook and bring out a check for a thousand dollars. And we worked together to bring that here to the city and to have that check be used for the, the highest and best use that the city would have for that. So I want to personally thank him, and Mayor, I know that you and I both have signed on to a letter that we're gonna send out for Tom with a thank you for that. And the letter reads, Dear Mr. Bailey, on behalf of the City of Cottage Grove, we would like to thank you for your generous donation of a thousand dollars to be used towards the best use of the city. Every donation helps the city provide the best and highest value services possible to our residents. Thank you again for your contribution. Tom, thank you very much. Have a great holiday. And with that, Mayor, I want to say that it's been a pleasure to work with all of you again for one more year. We made a lot of great accomplishments here as a team and also with our staff team that we recognized here a few minutes ago. So with that, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Thede?
I guess I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone and everyone stay healthy.
Absolutely, that is for sure. That is for sure. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, I want to issue my thanks and kudos to Councilmember Dennis for doing a fantastic job with the year in review. I know that's something that he takes a great deal of pride in and puts a lot of time into. And we certainly have a lot of great things to celebrate. So very appreciative of the fact that he took the time to present that and to all of the staff members who contributed as well, especially Scott Soroka and his expertise with regard to moving slide from slide to slide. Thank you for that. Secondly, this is the last meeting of the year, and generally, this would be the meeting where I come with a little gift bag for each of my council colleagues with, with some Christmas cheer inside. And because we can't be together this year in person, I hope you won't mind, but I've taken the liberty of making a donation to Friends in Need Food Shelf on behalf of the Cottage Grove City Council members in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. So that's, by my park high math, I think that's fifty dollars per person. So I did issue that donation to Friends in Need over the weekend when we went down to Hamlet Park to provide some paper goods and, and support the the Holiday Train event down there. And I just wanted to say to all of you, you know, that donation comes from all of us because I know how important we, we all value Friends in Need and the work that they do. And this year, with the Holiday Train not being able to come to town, I know they're in desperate straits for donations. As Councilmember Mills mentioned, you could not find a better place to donate. It is that time of year when many people are looking at their end-of-year donations because, of course, in many cases, those also result in a tax write-off. So please consider many of our local charitable organizations, whether it's your Lions Clubs, the Youth Service Bureau, as Mayor Bailey is, you know, part of that group, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee, which Councilmember Dennis and I are part of. You know, we've also got Friends in Need, Stone Soup, and so many other worthy organizations. So as you're looking at your charitable giving, I would ask that you look at those local organizations. And then finally, Mayor, I want to end with a message to everyone that our local businesses need our support right now more than ever. As you are shopping for your holiday giving, please consider shopping locally. And that would include our bars and restaurants, who would love to provide you with gift certificates or gift cards for your friends and family members to be able to enjoy once the pandemic is, you know, in the rearview mirror and, and we're able to actually enjoy our time together out for a meal and some, and some fellowship. Right now, those businesses are in tough shape. So anything you can do to help and shop local would be greatly appreciated. And I wish you all the happiest of holidays. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. I do have a few items. We'll start out with the, the official item that I have to do. And that is alerting the, the public when the city council has a closed-door meeting. After that meeting is completed, we just, I need to give an update as part of statute to just let the public know what the closed meeting was about and anything generic, I guess, if you will, regarding that closed meeting. The city, the city council did have the opportunity, and I would say it is the opportunity, to do a performance evaluation with our city administrator Jennifer Levitt this past Wednesday. And just for the general public, the, the performance evaluation went very well. And we're very happy overall with the performance of our administrator. And I would just, we're obviously gonna wish her luck to continue with us through this next year. And her leadership and, and support with all the staff of the City of Cottage Grove through this very interesting COVID year, going through this pandemic, was frankly just what the city needed. So I just wanted to share with the public that that's what the closed session was for last week, and it was a overall good performance review. The other item, this is pretty cool, too. I get to, to share with the public that my colleague on the council here, Councilmember Steve Dennis, I guess, was recognized, from what I understand, earlier today by the Chamber of Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce. And just for my council members and staff isn't aware, Steve was selected as this year's Volunteer of the Year recipient for the local Chamber of Commerce for his dedication and volunteerism to our, our community. And so I just want to mention to Councilmember Dennis, on the behalf of myself and the rest of the council, I know the staff and everybody in Cottage Grove, congratulations on receiving this fantastic award. And, and thank you once again for your service to our residents and frankly, the number of outstanding organizations and businesses that you've supported over this past year and years, actually, to be frank with you. And you're also part of the reason, frankly, why Cottage Grove is such a great place to, to live, work, and play. So congratulations, Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, I know on some of these other things, we do these like fake claps in the, in the screens there, but you got her. The other item I, I did want to bring up, and, and Councilmember Olson kind of alluded to it, and that is, he mentions about shopping local. And I just wanted to reiterate the importance of that, especially, and, and local is anything local. I mean, I, I did want to acknowledge that there was a great, and I did link them on my personal Facebook page, and I know other council members, I'm sure, will do the same. There was a, a, there's like a series, if you will, that WCCO TV has been doing on basically saving local main streets and talking about the effects of COVID have had on our main streets. And they highlighted three businesses in Cottage Grove this morning. The Healing Place with Ramona Westerberg, who used to be on our EDA, as well as Restic Floral and Grove Nutrition. And it was an amazing, I, I was proud. I was honored. I was excited. One, to hear how these businesses are working through the issue. One, to hear how these businesses are working through the issues, including Grove Nutrition, who opened during the pandemic as a grand opening, if you all recall. And how they're managing COVID and the appreciation, I just want to say that they have both for the, the city of Cottage Grove, some of the business programs that we did to support those businesses through the COVID relief funds and things that we've done. And frankly, the, the general public. And, and the reason I bring up the comment about the general public, and Councilmember Olson just brought it up. You know, we, we hear all the time, and, and we want, from a council and a staff standpoint, to get as many businesses that our, our constituents are asking for into Cottage Grove. And the one way we can do that, and getting different businesses to locate here, the ones that we want that aren't already here, is to support the ones that are here, and especially support them now in this really tough time. We're just about a week away, a little over a week away from Christmas. We do know that based on what we heard from the governor earlier today, that though the, the gyms are gonna start opening a little bit, the fact is, is the restaurants are still gonna remain closed to indoor seating. It is imperative that we do what we can to support them, and I heard Councilmember Olson again mention gift certificates, takeout, you name it. Please do what you can to support all of the local businesses, but please pay close attention and, and work to do what you can to help support our restaurants, our bars. And I would tell you, even though, because they're only gonna be at like 25% capacity, you know, I know at the first of the year, everybody talks about gym memberships and things like that for New Year's resolutions. This is a great opportunity to do that, and again, support those out there that are supporting us as a community. So please do what you can to support. Secondly, and I know our staff is going to be reaching out to all of our local businesses, there is a, a COVID-19 business relief plan that was approved by and signed by the governor earlier today after the legislators approved it on Monday night. And this is some additional possible funding that will go to restaurants, caterers, breweries, bars, distilleries, bowling gyms, fitness centers, things like that. And now there are, of course, just like there always is, there's prerequisites and there's qualifications. But I did want to mention that if you are a business out there and a business owner and you're looking for some help other than, as Councilmember Mills mentioned, reaching out to us either as an individual or a business to let us know if you need some help, but also there's another avenue there. And I encourage you to go to the Minnesota Department of Revenue website and read up and understand what are some of the the processes, the qualifications, and see what you would qualify for. I will mention to you, as I'm looking for the, the relief payment amounts, just to put it out there for the public, depending on the number of employees you have, from 1 to 20, to be up to 15,000, 21 to 100, 25,000, 101 to 300 is 35,000 and 301 employees or more. And that could be a combination of part-time and full-time, could be upwards of 45,000. So again, I'm glad to see the state's doing something to help these businesses survive this unprecedented time, and the city of Cottage Grove stands by to, to assist whenever we can. And then lastly, before my goodbyes to, for the year, I know there was a comment about the Friends in Need Food Shelf, so Councilmember Olson, thank you for mentioning that. Ironically, I just dropped a check off there earlier this afternoon. And I just want to say thank you to the public. Thank you to our businesses. I swore myself, and I, I'm gonna keep my word to Michelle Reagan down at the food shelf, that I won't say the amount that has been raised so far, but I have to tell you, I am absolutely blown away. They're still getting money in, they're still getting supplies in. But the fact of the matter is, this public has really, really, this community has really rose to the occasion for the support of others in our community that need it. And, and not even just Cottage Grove, obviously, the surrounding community, too. So I did have the opportunity to watch the virtual train event on Saturday evening. And again, remember, we didn't do Councilmember Dennis's begging groceries at Cub this year. Mayor Bailey did not sell bread at church. We didn't have the spaghetti dinner. I mean, there's so many things that we didn't do this year that weren't able to do because of COVID. But I just have to tell you, this community stepped in. And they stepped up, and they're, they're supporting one another. So next week, they are gonna officially let everybody know how much they've raised. But I just have to say, so far, what I've heard up to this point, it, it makes me proud, and I know it will for the rest of the council and staff, too, to be the mayor of this fine community, so, and the council members, too. So with that, Merry Christmas, everybody, and I guess we're gonna move to 13, which, which is workshop sessions open to public, there aren't in this evening. 14 is workshop session closed to the public, there aren't in this evening. We are at the moment of adjournment before we head off to the holidays, so who wants to make the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Joe, do you want to do the final roll call for the year?
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everybody. Let's look forward to a new year and please stay safe. We'll talk to you soon. Bye-bye.